Thanks, chief, for joining us this evening. We'll be calling this thirty-third regular session to order. We're going to have the invocation given by Councilmember Emily Keller and the pledge of flag. If you would please stand and join us.
We gather together here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faith give us strength to act honestly and well in all manners before us.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. We'll be following the rules that we adopted on December twentieth, two thousand sixteen. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, please mute it. All correspondence and distribution to elected officials should be provided with a copy for the city clerk also to put in the inclusion of the official record. The next scheduled meeting dates, next Tuesday is the State of the City at seven-thirty a.m. at Hager Hall. Then that evening at four p.m. is a work session and a work session on the thirteenth and the twentieth at four p.m., then a regular session on March twenty-seventh. We have an appointment this evening with Kimberly Jones to the Planning Commission. Her term to expire October thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Can I get a motion, please? Lou, you do them so well.
We have appointment, is that what we're doing, mayor?
Yeah, the Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the appointment of Kimberly Jones to the Planning Commission, term to expire October thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Welcome, Kimberly Jones. We're not, is she, Kimberly, can you stand? Are you here? Can I see you? There she is. I met her in a hallway, of course, of course.
Thank you.
When are we going to swear, Kimberly, in? Just at some point in time, this week or next week? We want to do it, when's the next meeting?
Tomorrow.
So we got to do it tomorrow?
If you're available, we can do it together.
You want to do, you have to do the certificate of qualification, but you want to do it after the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do it in my office, right? Can you hang around till after the meeting, Kim?
Yeah.
Cool, we'll do it then. Okay. Thanks. And I apologize for not connecting the two. Anyway, we have a proclamation for Rare Disease Day. Could I get Lydia Siders to come up and everybody who's with that group, please? Come on, come on, hold on. I had the privilege of meeting Emma, I guess it's been about two years now, down Discovery Station. And she suffers from a rare disease. And we're, I'm very happy to proclaim their rare disease day here. It's February twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. And the proclamation reads, whereas in the United States, a rare disease is defined as a condition that affects fewer than two-hundred thousand people, whereas Rare Disease Day is recognized the last day of February each year and seeks to raise awareness amongst policymakers, public authorities, industry representatives, researchers, health professionals, and anyone who has a genuine interest in rare diseases. And whereas there are no cures for the majority of the rare diseases and many of these diseases go undiagnosed, building awareness of rare diseases is important as one in ten people will live with a rare disease at some point in their life. Whereas while more than four-hundred-and-fifty drugs and biologics, bio, I hope I said that correctly. It doesn't look right. Doesn't look right. Have been approved for the treatment of rare diseases according to the Food and Drug Administration, millions of Americans still have rare diseases for which there is no approved treatment. Whereas individuals and families affected by rare diseases often experience problems such as diagnosis delay, difficulty finding a medical expert, and lack of access to treatments or ancillary services. And whereas Rare Disease Day improves knowledge amongst the general public of rare diseases while encouraging researchers and decision-makers to address the needs of those living with rare diseases. Now therefore be resolved in support of the city council, I, Robert E. Bruchus II, Mayor of the city of Hagerstown, Maryland, to hereby proclaim and recognize February twenty-eighth to be Rare Disease Day in Hagerstown, Maryland.
I apologize, I've been on Capitol Hill all day and I'm a little fried from the past few days. So, I just want to thank you. I have a daughter, my name is Michelle Watts, I'm sorry, I should back up. I have a daughter, Avery, who's nine. She was diagnosed with a rare disease three years ago when she was six. She has no signs, she's what we call, she has an invisible illness. She looks like a perfectly healthy little girl. She's very active and I would just, like I said, I would like to say thank you again on behalf of Avery and on behalf of my family and all the other kids and families out there with rare diseases.
So I am Lydia, I'm the Maryland State Ambassador with the National Organization for Rare Disorders through their advocacy arm, the Rare Action Network. I lead a network of roughly two-hundred individuals across the state of Maryland to raise awareness of rare disorders as well as support patients and families impacted by them. On a global scale, rare disease numbers have reached a global epidemic of three-hundred-and-fifty million people. So the fact that Hagerstown has recognized tomorrow as Rare Disease Day, Hagerstown is participating in a global awareness campaign. And we just want to thank the mayor as well as city council members for recognizing my daughter, Michelle's family, her family, Brittany, and all other rare disease patients.
Thank you. Uh, sure. Let me say your name first.
My name is Tasha Osborne and I would like to thank everybody for how I'm here today. I've been supporting, I've been supporting my sister, Emma, today.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Should we be moving to the side? Should we be moving to the side?
Oh, yes. Okay, everybody, one, two, three. One, two, three. Good, okay. Okay, one here. One, two, three. Do one more for the others. Awesome, great. Come on, one, two. Great. Would everybody mind standing up and taking a picture with us with this sign? All you got to do is open your hand flat out. It's a universal sign to raise awareness of rare diseases. That's a weird, not being. We should be, shouldn't we? We should be. Okay. Let me just hold your hand flat out, up in there.
Good.
Thank you so much. Go in here. Okay, let me do one with this camera. Also, let me do another one. And one more. Last one.
You can always stand on the desk.
No, she can't. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you guys. I don't allow Shelley to come through here unless she trips up on ours.
I know. I'm literally.
Okay, next up are citizen comments. We have a couple people who signed up this evening. First one is my good friend Jimmy Devine. Don't forget, Jimmy, let's try to keep it local. I don't have my phone, could someone time me five minutes, please?
Are you serious?
You got a set?
No.
Okay.
Give you a second. That way I know when to shut up. Good evening, mayor. City Council, name James Devine, post office, box two-two-one-seven, Hagerstown, Maryland. I read where the city police officer had taken prescription drugs. I'm asking the city council to approve a prescription of this medication to the department. There are people there that may need this to help calm their fears and anxiety over myself. Have you seen a new pot plant in Hagerstown? This is to the Republicans and evangelicals at large. I'm glad there is a medical marijuana measure because if these people who voted for this administration have a medical condition that they cannot see or hear how this, their vote is destroying the very fabric of this nation, they should take a toke and change the air in their heads. The Republicans and evangelicals have voted for a president who is a psychopath, a pathological liar, a dictator, a Russian puppet. When asked why they voted for such an unfit person to run for this nation, they say, what are you talking about? We got what we wanted. We got a national prayer Sunday, a move of embassy to Jerusalem, a religious appoint to Supreme Court anti-abortion legislation, a religious freedom department. The evangelicals say now they can push their religious values on the population at large. These evangelicals have become active participants in the moral deregulation of our political life. They say, never mind, whatever is true, whatever is honorable, whatever is right, whatever is good repute. These evangelicals are busy erasing bright lines and destroying moral landmarks. In the process, they are associating evangelicalism with bigotry, selfishness, deception. They are playing a grubby political game for the highest of stakes, the reputation of their faith. They don't believe in protecting the nation's values, health will well be a failure to uphold the values of the public. The tax overhaul is the biggest scam in this nation's history, borrowing a trillion and a half dollars which future generations will have to repay. A bribe to the public to vote for me. The tax system that enriches corporations and the wealthy would kick back into political election campaigns. The tax reform will be paid for cuts by millions of Americans' health insurance cuts in Medicaid funding, elimination of federal housing, cuts in food stamps, cuts to public housing, and raising their rents. The poor, the homeless, the people who need help will be, will bear the burden to offset these tax cuts while the rich and powerful enjoy the benefits of the money in their pockets. The democracy is backsliding into an authoritarianism, a dictatorship, a fascist state. The Republicans and evangelicals say, what are you talking about? We are getting what we want. In disregard the fact that they are destroying this country, its institutions, safeguards, the rule law, and the customs of civility, the concepts of truth. The religions teach hate and discontent. The Sunnis against the Shiites, the Irish Protestants against the Catholics, Muslims against the Jewish population, and everybody else probably against the Mormons. Religions were never developed to support a deity, a supreme being. It was developed to control the minds, hearts, and actions of the population. This planet has been here for over four billion years. Life developed in the oceans came onto the land and evolved to the many creatures of this planet, including humans. Lucy, the bones of a two-million-year-old primate, the evolution of humans out of Africa into the world. All humans are here because of this evolution. Everybody on this planet are brothers and sisters. These brothers and sisters are taught to kill each other because of their religious faith. A world without religion would be a better place. I can go out at night and look into the night sky, into the universe, and realize my existence on this planet is because of the stardust and evolution. And for those who do not believe in this, maybe they should take a toke and change the air in their head. The religions in this faith do not believe this and they should take and change their viewpoint on this. This is the facts in science, and religion and science will always conflict. The killing of humans, your brothers and sisters on this planet should stop, but will never do so because of the religions of this world. And a perfect example of that is World War Two. Your life and death depended on not who you were, not how you lived your life, but on the religion you believed in. And it's still happening in this world, all over this world, and it's the face of different religions that are killing each other, and I think it's a shame. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Very enlightening. Marvin.
I'm Marvin Law, eleven-thirty-five, Sunny Side Drive in Hagerstown. I have a number of pictures I printed for y'all to look at. You talked about the parking a month or so ago. I went two days between ten and two o'clock, took pictures of downtown Hagerstown and the amount of empty parking spaces. So I think you ought to rethink your parking meter fees going up. I also have pictures of trash around the alleys, derelict houses on Franklin Street, one on Jonathan Street. Here's one here, just a few doors away from City Hall on Franklin. I also took a picture, let's see, I have one more here, there it is. That house is tumbling down on Summit, and it's been that way for four years. They recently put tarps over it to, I guess, try to do something. And I have a picture, too, of a man named John Yoder up on Wayne Avenue. He takes care of the island, the plants and the trash and the weeds. He does this every week, every other week. And it's no reason in the world you couldn't get more people to do that in this town. It would help the whole town a whole lot. And the city should recommend something for these people that do that. I know he's, it's others. There was a man on Jonathan Street, older fellow named Ruben Russ. He went around with a grabber and picked up trash on Jonathan Street, kept Jonathan Street looking much better than Franklin Street. I think a PSA, you could work out with a junior college, Barbara Ingram School, maybe even some of the high schools, and come up with things they could help the city out. People with soup kitchens, soup kitchen could give them a small trash bag and they can come back with a full bag and put it in the dumpster. That would help the city. I mean, so many things can be done. It doesn't cost much at all. And a pat on the back, and it must be a number of people like John Yoder in this town that do things like that. Give them a ticket to the theater or treat them to a dinner or lunch, or even a breakfast and give them a pat on the back. You'd have more people doing things like that. And my last, and I have these pictures, I'm going to stay, and anybody wants to look at them, fine, I hope you do. I also have a picture of three-oh-five South Potomac Street. My son and I bought that a couple years ago, and it was a dump. And I have pictures of it before, during, and after. And there's so many houses in this town, something like that can be done if some sort of incentive was put out. It wouldn't cost the city a whole lot, maybe no tax on the real estate for five years or something. And my last buggy boo, if we had a decent senator and representative up here could push my temporary sales tax exemption. I have a picture, this was taken down at the Hagerstown Premium Outlets, August thirteenth, nineteenth, tax-free shopping. If they can do that statewide, I don't see why they couldn't do it for like a three-by-four block in this town for a couple years and then move it from to another town that needs help. And you can't even get these people to listen to you. I tried the senator up here, tried calling him a number of times, I never got past a aide, college student aide. So, that's it.
Thank you, Marvin. Georgia Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Thank you for your service to our community. We much appreciate it. Before I make the remarks of what I wanted to ask you about tonight, I just wanted to say that my cousin and I are planning to go to Washington, D.C. tomorrow, and will stand in line to go through the rotunda to show our respects for the Reverend Billy Graham. Man, it's had a tremendously powerful influence on our country and line and honor, only four people have lined it, been put to lay an honor in the rotunda, and I think it's a very well-deserved honor. I'm looking forward to that. I, before I make some comments, I have a question because I'm ill-informed. I've tried to keep up with the issue in the newspaper of the two-tiered property tax proposal. Could you tell me where that stands? Has it already been passed? Is it being debated? Is it going to be on a future agenda for a vote?
Actually, we had a work session at six-thirty this evening.
Okay.
Which would have been in the newspaper about our schedule, talking about the tier tax. And currently, we are still discussing it.
Okay.
Nothing's been passed.
All right. Thank you. And I read in the paper, I don't know if it's accurate, that sixty percent of the properties in Hagerstown are rentals? Is that accurate?
That's probably pretty accurate.
Would that include commercial properties, probably?
I think you just told, you just told me residential was that.
Just residential. That's residential?
Mm-hmm.
Not commercial? All right. And do you know how, what percentage of landlords live outside the city? I live in Williamsport.
About eighty percent.
Yeah, you live at sixteen-seven-thirty-one Aqueduct Drive, right?
Yep. And about how many?
More than eighty percent, I think, was our.
Okay. I do like to speak in opposition to the two-tiered property tax proposal. I think it raises some questions legally and on discrimination basis, but I'm no legal expert, not a lawyer. I don't know where that stands. I'll have to ask my friend here, Bill Wance, where, how to approach that. But I do think it puts those of us who are landlords, and I appreciate it, owning a property here in the city for four years. We have a good tenant, and the city has done a good job helping us when needed. There was a big tree between the house and the sidewalk that was damaging the sidewalk. The city took it down, came back, fixed the sidewalk. Everything was handled very well, which we appreciated. And so we've benefited and appreciate the city's, the support that we've had in the past. But I do think that as landlords, it kind of puts us in the position, we don't vote, we don't have any say in the city and the election process, but it kind of ends up, I think, making us the tax collectors for the city because eventually, if it does come down, that we will, you know, have to pay, and I think the proposal I've heard is twenty-five percent increase?
There has been much speculation about this, about this tier tax thing.
Yeah.
About four dollars a unit a month.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you, you apparently have a single-family residence that you rent out?
It's a duplex.
Okay, a duplex. There's been discussion about exempting duplexes.
Okay.
So, I mean, there is, unfortunately, there is a lot of speculation.
Yeah.
And no fact.
Well, that's why I.
We were far, far from.
Yeah.
Enacting anything.
Yeah, and that's why I came down tonight because I wanted to see, I knew, needed information and wanted to be better informed so to know how to address it.
I think everybody agrees across the board that if it is enacted, it would definitely not apply to single-family rentals. Next question is, would it apply to duplexes? There is one concept that it would only apply to units that have four or more units, but we're, we're nowhere near having decided, A, to do it, and B, if we do it, how much it will be and who it will apply to.
All right.
So that's where we're at.
Well, I'll be looking forward to keeping abreast of that, and as you consider it, we'll pray for you have wisdom to know what would be best. I know the city can use the revenue and such, and, you know, I think it does, I think it certainly would have packed the people that are renting, the people that are tenants, I think would be impacted because as a landlord, I, you know, wouldn't, we haven't had to raise our rents too much over the past four years that we've owned the property, only one increase in the four years. So I'd like to do the best. We have a good tenant, I'd like to treat them fairly, too, but a tax increase would impact, you know, the rent we'd have to charge.
Sure.
And on another matter, just a little unpleasant situation. It's understandable. I don't come into the city real often, but I do business down with Mr. Cox at Professional Tax, and we came in Thursday morning, of all days to come into town to see him, and decided since we were going north to park on North Locust Street, the second block there beside the church, on Thursday morning, and didn't stop to think about the street sweeping or the street cleaning. I went in the office, my wife stayed in the car, and then she realized there was something going on. The street sweeper was coming out behind her, but she wasn't sure exactly what it was at first, since we don't live in the city and see it too much. But she did recognize a man a couple doors up running out of his house, putting his shirt on so he could jump in his car and move his car. But before my wife could get out of the car, the lady that issues the tickets came up and handed her the ticket. And if the driver would have beeped the horn, she would have been glad to move the car. We didn't really know what was going on, but it was a pretty quick trigger on the issuance of the ticket. So it's just one of those things, and we'll be more careful when we come into the city. Thank you.
Yeah, there's signs that say, no parking this side, street sweeping, yeah.
Yeah, we saw the sign after it was all over.
Yeah.
But that's, I just felt it was pretty quick. She could have easily moved the car.
Yeah.
If she had been asked to do so, she'd have been glad to move the car.
I understand.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. That's the only other person that, no one else has signed up to speak, but if you do wish to speak, please step up to the podium, give us your name and address. Okay, we're going to move forward now. All right, next up is public hearing. Thirteen-oh-one Potomac Avenue, LCD. Mr. Bachmiller.
Good evening, Steve Bachmiller for the Department of Planning and Code Administration. This is a public hearing for a zoning map amendment in order to overlay a property with a local conversion district, overlay district. This is KZM two thousand seventeen-oh-two. The applicant is the Eklund Family Practice LLC, and the property is located at thirteen-oh-one Potomac Avenue.
Eric, help.
Thank you.
Oh, there we go.
Okay. This is a request for a local conversion district overlay. Just to give you a brief overview, it's a tool that we have in the zoning ordinance that allows for the adaptive reuse of commercial buildings that are non-conforming, either active or expired, that are embedded within our residential zoning districts so they don't become distressed and derelict. This particular location is on the northwest corner of Potomac Avenue in Magnolia. It's the area shown in, highlighted in yellow in the photograph on the screen. This is the former Allegheny Electronics Building. The request is for the property to have the local conversion overlay, which would allow, per the proposal, two things. One is for the property to be used for ambulatory healthcare services, basically doctor's offices of varying sorts, and also business and professional offices. The zoning ordinance has a list of potential uses that could be allowed in the, in the local conversion overlay district, and applicants are basically permitted to select up to about a half a dozen in order to provide flexibility. In this case, they're only proposing two types, two forms of offices. Let's see if it works this time. There we go. This is the concept plan for the development. If this is approved, they would end up moving to a site plan stage, which would be subject to review and approval by the Planning Commission. The building is the, again, the former Allegheny Electronics Building, highlighted in white on this photograph. The proposal is to rehabilitate the building in general, exterior and interior, and also the site. This is a. Uh, the zoning ordinance has a list of potential uses that could be allowed in the, in the local conversion overlay district, and applicants are basically permitted to select up to about a half a dozen in order to provide flexibility, in this case, they're only proposing two types, uh, two forms of offices. This is the concept plan for the development, if this is approved, they would end up moving to a site plan stage, which would be subject to review and approval by the Planning Commission. The building, uh, is the, again, the former Allegheny Electronics Building, highlighted in white on this photograph. Uh, the proposal is to rehabilitate the, the building in general, exterior and interior, and also the site. This is a generalized concept plan of approximately how the parking would be laid out. Again, this is a concept plan for the purposes of illustrating the rezoning, details will be locked down specifically in the site plan process with the, uh, Planning Commission. Uh, parking currently exists along Magnolia Avenue, uh, the condition of backing into Magnolia Avenue, uh, to gain access to and from the site would not change, this has been reviewed by the, uh, City Engineers Office and given the circumstances, they find this acceptable to continue. There we go. Okay, most all of us are familiar with this building, it's located in the north end, one long, uh, major corridor. Um, building was built in the early twentieth century, therefore by age it qualifies, uh, property has to have existed prior to the adoption of our first zoning ordinance in nineteen fifty-six. There are certain performance requirements in the zoning ordinance, uh, for these things, uh, one of which is if it's a building that has, uh, large windows that have been infilled, uh, storefront windows, that as part of the rehabilitation plan, that those be reopened. In this particular case, there are, is a bank of windows on the, uh, east side of the building facing Potomac Avenue, plus two door areas on either side in the clip corners of the building, these would be subject to that requirement, and that's not, uh, a waivable provision within the ordinance. If you notice along the side of the building, there are service bay, this building was originally built, I believe, as a small car dealership or car repair facility in the early twentieth century. The language of the ordinance does not require service bay doors, uh, to have that same mandatory treatment. In this particular case, uh, the, uh, concept proposal does, uh, show that these will be, uh, opened and have a lot of glass in them as well, however, that is not required by the ordinance because they're not storefront windows as specifically mentioned in the ordinance. And the applicant, uh, is proposing to actually, uh, use the facility for his dental practice. Uh, this is a concept plan of showing how they plan to rehabilitate the building, uh, they are very attracted to the early twentieth century car, uh, uh, industry architecture of the building, and they plan to, to build on that theme. Uh, the two photographs below show the building as it appeared in the nineteen, late forties it appears. Uh, the one on the right is an interior photograph showing the storefront, uh, windows, uh, in the, um, showroom. The Planning Commission held a public, uh, hearing on this matter and recommends that the mayor and council approve this, subject to six conditions, which are enumerated in the staff report, which I'm not gonna read into the record individually. Staff recommendation, staff, uh, agrees with the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval of the rezoning with the six conditions listed in the report. Staff also notes that, for the record, that when the Planning and Code Administration Department recommended creating the zoning overlay for, to the Planning Commission and to ultimately to this body, examples were sought to illustrate the potential and importance of such a zoning tool. This building was one of those foremost examples staff used in explaining and justifying the need for the local conversion zoning district, so essentially, this is essentially the poster child for the zoning tool. Uh, later on in this meeting, uh, it, on your agenda is also, um, for introducting, introducing an ordinance, uh, in order to compress the, uh, the review time, uh, so, the ordinance is, uh, introduced, uh, in a couple of weeks at a work session, we'll have a work session with you all, uh, to get you, your deliberations on this, and then, uh, if you choose to move forward, then, uh, an actual motion to approve would be at your next regular meeting. We'll enter the staff report and the, uh, the, at the elaboratization by reference, uh, into the record as well as the application. The applicant is here as well and he's represented by Mr. William Wance.
Mr. Wance, do you wish to speak or have your applicant speak?
Yes, we may come forward.
Please step up.
We may need another chair for Mr. Flowers of Allegheny Electronics if we may have.
May I ask if anyone has signed up to testify in opposition to this request?
Nope.
We might be able to shorten and condense our presentation a little bit. Hey, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is William C. Wance, I'm an attorney colleague of Mr. Metzner, who's practicing law here in Hagerstown, my law office is at one twenty-three West Washington Street, the owner of a downtown building in the city of Hagerstown. With me this evening are David Flowers, who currently is the principal of Allegheny Electronics and is the owner through an, uh, an entity of the, uh, or is the owner of the property that's a subject to the, this rezoning. Also with me this evening is Dr. Rhett Eklund, I'm sure many of you are familiar with Dr. Eklund, he's a second-generation dental practice here in the city of Hagerstown for many years. This application for rezoning, uh, creates two opportunities, one opportunity for, uh, Mr. Flowers to sell a building which has served him and the electronics community in this area, including TV repairman throughout the last half of the twentieth century very well. It allows him to recover his capital investment in the property, and it also serves and creates an opportunity for Dr. Eklund and the Eklund Family LLC, uh, Limited Liability Company, uh, in that Dr. Eklund currently has dental practice off Cypress Street, just off Potomac Avenue, and this provides an opportunity for him to stay in the same neighborhood where he currently owns two properties, uh, and, uh, to, uh, enlarge his dental practice to provide additional service, uh, to the community. When, uh, we discussed the application in this case, uh, with, uh, the city planning department, we reviewed the zoning ordinance and in our application, and I'll submit copies of these as an exhibit, we submitted an application for dental, medical, business, and professional offices, facilities, and clinics, and the reason for this selection is simply this, uh, this combines two categories of uses in the city zoning ordinance, one is, uh, medical and dental offices, and the other is business and professional offices. Uh, we felt it appropriate to combine those because this proposed use is, uh, both a professional office and a dental or medical clinic. This would facilitate the eventual resale of the property should Dr. Eklund retire from the practice of dentistry and determine to market the building for sale, and it would also avoid any controversy as to whether the proposed use that might be included in here would be considered a business or a profession, and because those are combined in the ordinance, it seemed appropriate from the legal point of view to apply for those. We're asking for, for that, uh, determination in the ordinance adopted. I'd like to present a brief, uh, history of, of, uh, this property, and I'll ask, uh, Mr. Flowers to, uh, describe his, uh, his knowledge of the background and history of the use of this property, and this is essential because we have to establish that this use has existed for a long time, back to the date the original city zoning ordinance was enacted in October of nineteen fifty-six. Will you be swearing witnesses in this case?
Not to my knowledge.
All right, well, we'll just, we'll just call, uh, call Mr. Flowers, have him testify. Introduce yourself to the mayor and council by giving your, uh, name and, and address.
I'm David Flowers, I live at two-two-two Michigan Drive in Fallin Waters, I'm the owner of Allegheny Electronics, uh, it's been in my, I'm not Allegheny, but State Electronics was the original company, it's been in my family's for a long, long time, my grandfather started, uh, working, playing with wireless in nineteen eleven and sold radio kits back in the twenties for KDK in Pittsburgh, and it's, you know, the business has been in my family since then, uh, sold radios, TVs, and parts, and later became a distributor and sold to other, uh, TV repairmen and, you know, sell, people selling TVs and radios and so forth. And, uh, we're still here, so, it's been a long time, over a hundred years.
And have you consented to this application for rezoning?
Yes, I have.
And, uh, do you currently have a contract to, to sell the property with, uh, Dr. Eklund's Limited Liability Company? Fill the board, fill the, uh, members of the, of the council in briefly regarding the background of this property before, uh, you begin, uh, your business there.
I believe the building was built in nineteen twenty-eight, uh, it was a car dealership, um, I can't remember the name now, Metalkoff Motors, and, um, they were there for a long time, and then, uh, Allegheny Electronics of Altoona, Pennsylvania moved to town and they bought the building in nineteen fifty-five to house Allegheny Electronics, which they, uh, owned until nineteen ninety-six when we took it over, or my father took it over, and, uh, we've been there since.
And does this history of the commercial use of the building extend back prior to October of nineteen fifty-six?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers, any questions for Mr. Flowers before we proceed to Dr. Eklund? Dr. Eklund, introduce yourself to the mayor and council.
Hi, I'm Rhett Eklund, um, I live at two-one-five-zero-eight Mount Enner Road, I've been part of this community since, uh, nineteen seventy, and, um, it's considered an honor to, to be a part of, um, Washington County in Hagerstown, and, um, me and my team, uh, we have, uh, we have a passion for, for serving, um, taking care of, of people's, um, dental health needs, and, um, we have a passion for this community, and I really feel it's, it's an honor to be able to have this opportunity to, um, I guess, kind of pass the baton, um, from car dealership to, um, from a electronics store to a, a dental practice. And I, I, I don't wanna miss an opportunity to just express my, my, um, appreciate the support that the Planning Commission has, has shown. I, I didn't realize, uh, that this service, uh, was, was part of, um, this, this process, and, um, they've, they've been very, very helpful, um, as we've gone through this, and, um, Steve Bachmiller and the rest of them, um, uh, they've been just, you know, super. And, um, I also, I, I think that this whole process, even though it's, it takes a while, um, it is something that needs to be, uh, thought through thoroughly. We need to not only look for the future in this town, but we gotta, we gotta also protect its, its past, and so, I'm, I'm very open to any questions or any concerns that, that any one of you, uh, may have, um, I, I think it's, it's, it's something that needs to, to be looked at carefully, but, um, I'm, I'm very excited about, uh, being able to, um, bring back the, the life of this, this old, um, car dealership, it was a DeSoto car dealership, and, um, we have, we have a vision of, of taking a, a modern industrial look from the exterior, uh, to the, um, interior, and I, I think it's gonna be something exciting for, uh, the city.
Thank you.
What I'd like to do, and this may condense the hearing as I indicated at the outset, is submit a copy of some exhibits, uh, which we prepared and submitted to the Planning Commission so that you'll have those in the record for review as well.
Now, it's our position in this case that we concur with the staff and board recommendation of the Planning Commission, so we would adopt that as part of our presentation, we concur in Mr. Bachmiller's presentation that this meets all the requirements for the establishment of this proposed floating zone. An additional requirement in the ordinance is that the proposed reclassification of the subject property be consistent with the, uh, uh, comprehensive plan of the city of Hagerstown. I'm sorry, I need to do a handstand of this result, um, and I would just, uh, briefly highlight a version of some extracts from the comprehensive plan establishment for the record.
As you probably doubtless aware, there's no requirement to prove change of mistake in a floating zone, uh, rezoning application, I believe we've, uh, reviewed and, and satisfied with the six conditions recommended by the Planning Commission, but let me just review those briefly. Uh, the building shall be used for professional and medical offices, we would add business and professional to avoid any, uh, ambiguity. Uh, the, uh, second condition is there will be no outdoor vending machines, we agree with that. Uh, the, uh, part of that second condition, uh, has to do with the storefront windows, and, uh, we're cooperative with the city, we proposed a concept design by a very well-qualified , uh, designer and architect from Frederick County, uh, that, uh, we're looking, and I think the photographs that were shown to you, uh, of the, uh, building in the nineteen forties gave us further insight, but the actual original windows are still there, and once the covers are taken off, that will be our guide. The, uh, uh, existing freestanding sign will be removed as suggested in the recommendation and condition four, uh, we've submitted some preliminary concepts for landscaping in the parking areas, and some of those are identified, uh, in the concept plans that have been submitted and that you've seen. Uh, there will be, the outdoor storage, tri-storage would be screened as condition five, and, uh, the, uh, use would be substantially consistent with the, uh, rezoning exhibit and the building exhibits submitted. So unless you have any questions, uh, we would submit the application and documents into the record, uh, the, our concurrence with the staff recommendation and the record of the Planning Commission so that you have an evidentiary basis upon which to, uh, make a ruling.
Any questions for Mr. Wance or Mr. Eklund?
Let me just say first, uh, Dr. Eklund, that, you know, it, it's hard not to get excited about what you've proposed, um, because like most folks that, that live in the community, you know, I've driven by the building a million times and wondered, you know, if anything's ever going to sort of, you know, operate, uh, at that location again. But I want to address, uh, Mr. Wance, uh, the proposal to combine, uh, and here's the concern that I expressed at, uh, prior meeting when mayor and council, uh, were presented, uh, this item from staff, is the combination where it says dental, medical, and business and professional offices, facilities, and clinics. Uh, I certainly, uh, understand and appreciate and encourage what you'd like to do with the building now, um, I have no doubt that that, you know, that isn't what you're going to do with it, and, and that you're not gonna operate that, you know, uh, for, for as far as you, you can see into the future. Uh, once this is approved though, you know, that allowance, uh, i- is there in perpetuity, and so, um, I, I have to go back to, to at least one other, um, prior, uh, proposal of what I'll call a similar property in sort of a similar neighborhood in another part of the town where, uh, the, if I recall correctly, the, the focus, uh, was not for dental offices but rather for, um, a, a type of, um, and I believe the type of inpatient ambulatory clinic, um, and that's the, it was a, a telephone building, uh, I'm looking at, see now, that was over, I think on First Street maybe, I think my question at that, at our workshop, or, or our work session was, can this property, once it is given this approval, then be approved for that type of use? Because, and I'm just going to be very frank here, you know, an ambulatory-oriented, uh, clinic is much different than a professional dental office, it just is. Uh, it, it has a different, uh, context within the neighborhood, uh, this is largely a residential neighborhood, and so I have that concern that, you know, am I approving something that, let's say, you know, you do so well that in five years, you know, you, you go somewhere else and then, uh, we've opened the door then for, for something that the neighborhood didn't expect, and, and that, that's, I guess that's the struggle that I have. And so, what I read this evening, and, and I guess maybe the two questions that I have for either Mr. Wance or, or staff, is just how inclusive does this, um, the, this quoted part here, dental, medical, and business, professional offices, facilities, and clinics have to be? And, uh, what does it mean when it says, um, that medical offices reads, but it doesn't include dental here, and I guess that's my curiosity, it says, "Ambulatory healthcare services with exception of outpatient substance abuse centers." So, so I guess for me, I'd love to approve this, I'm looking for what protections we have of, of what things, you know, it could become that we may not want to see in that neighborhood.
If I could, uh, speak to that a little bit, after we had our presentation to you all a couple of weeks ago, I took that information back and I spoke to Jason Morton, the city attorney, and they are in the process of looking into this issue, uh, there may be some flexibility... flexibility perhaps in the fact that this is a floating district, an overlay, it's kind of a unique character. But we don't have answers for you quite on that quite yet. Our plan is to be prepared to address that, those questions of yours along that, those lines from a legal standpoint, when you have a workshop in a couple of weeks to decide, this body deliberate what it's going to do. We don't have answers for you.
Good.
As far as comparisons, the one that was over on East First Street, if I remember correctly, was actually going to be an inpatient. Essentially, it was a hospital.
Right.
And the zoning district was different. Here we have a situation where this is a residential zoning district, a small piece of property, and a specific overlay zone. So there are abilities to restrict it. Exactly how much, we're in the process of trying to give you guidance on that.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Got it.
Dr. Eklin, did you want to address that as well?
I plan on keeping my current building on Fort Cypress Street. And we do, we also currently own a home that we're, that we're, that we're restoring on April Cypress Street. My father bought the, brought the practice there to Fort Cypress Street in nineteen eighty. One of my principal concerns is to be able to expand my business so that I can create a business model that will not only serve my needs but the needs of my staff members when that day comes to where I retire. And so it's, we need to grow. Things have been good and I, from what I hear, I, you know, I don't know city law, obviously, but it sounds like that this is something that, that there needs to be, there needs to be something to make sure that the building stays with what my vision is. Because I would be horrified if my vision was somehow changed and I went back and looked at it. So, once again, I think that's an excellent question to bring up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to add, or the attorney? Is there any comments? No one has signed up to speak, but has anybody wish to speak either for or against this project? Yes, ma'am. Can you step up and give us your name and address?
Lily Downs, twelve forty-ninth Potomac Avenue. We live directly across the street from Mount Gaming. And I have two questions. Parking is an issue. And Rhett, I welcome that change on that building. It's going to be beautiful. But parking is an issue. You have a large staff. And you'll have patients. So how will you be able to accommodate parking? At Potomac and Magnolia, that intersection is very busy. So what would you do? And I also question the medical slash clinic part because I don't want any drug rehab or anything like that outpatient wandering around my neighborhood.
Okay.
I've already had that problem in my house. And that was scary. And I certainly wouldn't want any office or medical clinic or whatever to include drug rehab or anything to that fact. And I know you have a large staff because I've counted cars. And you have at least ten cars.
You mean currently on Cypress Street?
All over. Well, he has parking over on Cypress where your father owns that duplex. But where are you going to accommodate all the extra parking?
I want to be successful and I want to grow and I want to offer more employment. And I recognize, I recognize, I recognize that there's, there's a community that I'm a part of. I can't say that I have the answers other than we've always done our best to be respectful to the community. I know it didn't quite turn out the way I wished, but literally we've purchased property to try to accommodate moving, moving staff off of street and closer to our, to our office. And I, I think there's, there can be some creative ideas. I don't know if this is the place to brain up, brainstorming. But I think it is something that may be not quite in this forum, that we could talk about some things that I have that would easily remedy what you're saying.
I count nine spaces, nine parking spaces. And your staff takes up more than that, much more your patients.
If, if I can increase the value of the homes across from my, my business through, through showing a revitalized Hagerstown, I guess that's the pro to it. The disadvantage would be, how does it impact it? And of course, that's, I guess there's two good examples that have been brought up. I, once again, I think that we can, we can, we can talk about this in a, in a, in a different forum to see how we can remedy it. But I know that I've seen this type of business model succeeding in, in places all across the country where they're taking, they're taking residential, retail, medical slash dental, and combining them. And it seems to have some sort of a synergy where people can, can live and, and work and be a part of a community where you have a certain bond, let me put it that way, as opposed to a remote office building that people drive to and they go back to their homes. That, to me, is kind of dead. And I think this is, this is part of a way to revitalize the town. But yes, I do think that this is something that needs to be discussed.
Thank you. Thank you.
And like I said, I welcome the change. It will, it will be much better. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, I can provide a little bit of context about the parking.
I figured you could.
Okay. When this tool was set up, the local conversion overlay, a lot of factors were weighed in. And the way it was designed, there was a lot of discussion specifically about the issues of parking because a lot of these types of uses, the ones that have been approved to this point, have little, and in some cases absolutely no parking and have to rely on street. The regulatory philosophy essentially, when this was created, was there's in the balance of between resurrecting these distressed buildings, getting them up and running versus the potential that there may be some on-street parking impact, that they came down on the side of get the buildings fixed up and reoccupied. So with these local conversions, typically there is an expectation it may generate some demand for on-street parking as a matter of principle essentially. In this particular case, keep in mind that these concepts are strictly at this point concepts. We don't have site plans yet. The site plan or the aerial view concept, if you were bird flying down one of those, that actually shows eleven parking spaces. A parking space is nine by eleven, nine by eighteen feet. And that'll be worked out with, in the site plan as far as exactly how many parking spaces. It's probably going to be nine, ten, eleven, somewhere in there. But I just can't say exactly what. But as far as local conversion districts, by far, this probably has more park, on-site parking than probably any, matter of fact, I'm sure, any of the ones that have come to y'all prior to this point.
Also, substantial unused on-street parking.
What side of North Potomac Street there? In front of the church?
Wait a minute. You mean people would have to walk from where they park to get into this business?
And actually, it's very close, especially if staff park there.
I do know that.
I live very close. I think that it's a, will be a great benefit for the community. But I understand, you know, the concern of parking. But I, you know, there is a lot of parking in front of the church available. So.
And if you take into account some of the other local versions that are already been approved, there was one last year over on West Washington Street, storefront, zero parking. Also, there's one on North Locust Street where somebody put in a pet grooming business, no parking, again. Also, keep in mind too, that this building has an existing viable commercial use in it. Let's say Mr. Flowers decides to sell to somebody else who wants to operate a store, which they can because it's a store now, maybe that store's going to be a lot more popular than Mr. Flowers' store is. So it's very possible that the existing zoning, non-conforming zoning of the property could, in theory, with another user, have those issues as well.
Well, I happen to know that Mr. Flowers' store is very popular because I went there one time in order to get a conversion unit that would convert American electric to German electric when I wanted to seize. So I needed to have that before I blew up my blow dryers and electric shavers and things like that. That was the only place I could go to get it at. It was very popular for me.
I have had other people often buy the building in the past that wanted to put like a convenience-type store in there. And I, you know, I have other people that are interested in the building, you know, have told me they've expressed interest along those lines. So, I mean.
Okay, let me get back to this real quick. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak either for or against? Please come up now and do so. Okay, nobody else? Nobody else? Do you have some closing comments?
I think we've presented everything we wanted to bring to you this evening.
Okay. Anything from mayor and council? No? Good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up is the Comprehensive Plan Vision Hagerstown two thousand thirty-five. I'm going to have to start eating before I come to meetings where we have public hearings.
Good evening. My name is Megan Flick with Planning and Code Administration. And passing out the presentations right now is Kathy Marr, who's the Director of Planning and Code Administration. And this is the public hearing for the City Comprehensive Plan Update.
Then I'm not going to call you the new Alex anymore.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So the purpose of this meeting is to present Planning Commission's recommended draft of the Comprehensive Plan Update, which is called Vision Hagerstown two thousand thirty-five to the general public and mayor and council. This presentation will kind of provide an overview on changes made to address state comments and public hearing input. The purpose of the Comprehensive Plan, the plan is the city's official statement of policies directing the physical, social, and economic development of Hagerstown for the next twenty years. It's kind of considered a roadmap for how the city should grow and it establishes a vision for the community in the future. The plan also covers topics including land use, transportation, housing in neighborhoods, community facilities, economic development, and water and environmental resources. And Maryland state law requires municipalities to have a comprehensive plan that is reviewed every ten years. Vision Hagerstown two thousand thirty-five updates the two thousand eight plan. So like I said, Vision Hagerstown two thousand thirty-five updates the two thousand eight Comprehensive Plan. The main difference is that the two thousand eight plan was created during a time of growth and so it directed growth and annexation in the city. Whereas the plan update, Vision Hagerstown two thousand thirty-five, addresses the challenges faced in Hagerstown since two thousand eight. So, for example, the recession caused a rise in unemployment and a rise in the poverty rate. So the plan update focuses on revitalization of the urban core to strengthen the economy. The plan incorporates planning efforts since two thousand eight while also addressing Hagerstown's emerging challenges and building on its successes. So a few of the plans that are incorporated into the plan are the Sustainable Community Plan, the Community Center, City Center Plan, a bunch of comprehensive rezonings, small area plans, the Long Range Transportation Plan, and then more county comprehensive rezonings as well. And as for public review of the draft of the plan, Vision Hagerstown two thousand thirty-five went out for the State Clearinghouse Review on June eighth, two thousand seventeen, and the Planning Commission held a public review meeting on August thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Since the State Clearinghouse Review, we've received written comments from the Maryland Department of Planning, the Maryland Department of Transportation, the Maryland Historical Trust, and the Maryland Department of the Environment. We've also received a request for expansion of the MRGA boundary in the Hewitts Crossroads area by Bowman Development. And the Planning Commission reviewed Bowman's request on September thirteenth and voted to recommend the revision to the plan. Planning staff held a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and Mayor and Council on September nineteenth. And finally, the Planning Commission reviewed the state comments at several meetings and finalized their review on December sixth. And then just to mention additional public input that we've received prior to issuance of the plan for the State Clearinghouse Review, we put out five online surveys on the topics of downtown, economic development, transportation, and water resources, urban design, sustainability, and housing in neighborhoods. And over thirteen hundred citizens responded to that. So that was a lot of good public input that the Planning Commission reviewed before approving this draft.
The major themes of the Comprehensive Plan, the first being future land use. That's one of the things that most people actually anticipate for the Comprehensive Plan because it's what leads to the comprehensive rezoning after the plan is adopted. There's been some recommended changes to future land use map to assess the rationality of the existing zoning, provide recommendations for the next comprehensive rezoning, and also placing an emphasis on business employment. Another theme is growth and annexation, strengthen the city, maximize the efficiency of services, and provide rational city boundary as best as possible. Revitalization of the downtown, reinforce the downtown's role as a regional center for government, economic activity, education, and culture, and large tourism activities. Neighborhood revitalization is another theme. That would be to increase, oh, brother. Excuse me. Excuse me. Allergic to this room. Increase homeownership. Protect neighborhoods from blight. Deconcentrate subsidized housing. Another theme, revitalization of vacant and underutilized land in the city to attract new residents and businesses. Enhance fiscal foundation and broaden the economic base. Transportation, another theme. Alleviate traffic concerns, accommodate future growth, continue alternative or enhanced systems for biking, walking, and transit. Parks and recreations. Assess areas under served by parks to plan for future parks. Protect natural buffers like the Antietam Creek. Improve public access to the creek and marsh run. Community facilities. Maintain and expand public safety services. Support civic institutions that add to quality of life. Support expansion of school services and support expansion of high-speed broadband network. And finally, the last two themes, water and wastewater. Plan for efficient growth of water and wastewater systems. Prioritize areas for growth. Reduce impervious coverages and improve stormwater impact on waterways. And the final theme, environmental resources and sustainability. Explore practice to protect water and air quality. Encourage green infrastructure. Implement practices consistent with sustainable Maryland designation that the city has. Just give you a few of the maps, the main maps that are in the plan. This is the proposed future land use map. It's the guide for the comprehensive rezoning that will follow plan adoption. The goals for the changes that were recommended would be consistent with the prior comprehensive rezoning in two thousand and ten. Be consistent with other plans since two thousand eight and changes to properties that have occurred since the plan was adopted. And placing an emphasis on business employment. Growth and annexation. The city's growth boundary, we refer to as the medium-range growth boundary on this map. It's the dark blue outline with the lighter blue infill area around the city. There's some proposals to realign the boundary to include areas around the city where growth is more likely to occur within the next twenty years, which is the life cycle of the horizon you look out to with the plan. And two, to remove lands that lack infrastructure are likely to remain agriculture through the next twenty years. The boundary developed based on analysis of capacity and demand for service from new. based on analysis of capacity and demand for service from new and redevelopment of land, and then project what will occur over the next 20 years in and around the city. The MRGA is similar to the urban growth area, the long-range growth area, as referred to in our plan, due to limits. I'm sorry, it's smaller, due to limits on water wastewater capacity. The adjustments look to areas where there's growth pressures, and so, because we have to balance if we're making it larger, we have to balance it out. And so, we propose shrinking in areas where there's no infrastructure and it's farmland, basically. We don't foresee it developing within the next 20 years. As a result of the Comprehensive Plan's hearing, we received a request for an expansion by Bowman Development out on the Green Castle Pike in the Hewitts area. It's in the southwest corner, basically across the street from Sheets. They would like that area to be redeveloped, or they would like to develop that area on city water, so it would need to be in the MRGA for that use. It's an area that's served by county wastewater, not city, and it currently already has one EDU of water service assigned to the land. Must have been a house there at one point, not currently. It's zoned highway interchange in the county. Proposed development is for retail up along 40 and then flex industrial office flex space behind there. The anticipated demand for water service of that type of use is 27 EDUs or 5,400 gallons per day. Planning Commission voted to recommend that boundary revision on September 13th, but because they were looking to make an expansion, they directed staff to see where can we make another retraction to balance it so we're still at the same service demand level. And so, utilizing a formula in the plan for determine how much raw land requires in terms of EDUs when you don't know really what's gonna happen, we used 22 and a half acres would be a balance for the 27 EDUs that would be required in Green Castle Pike. So, they use that formula rather than acre for acre, since we already knew the projected demand for the expansion on Green Castle Pike. And we conferred with the county planning staff, and they requested that we do no further retractions on the west side of town in that ag area. And they suggested we look over towards the east side of town at 70 and 40, which is what we did. And so, the proposed balancing of that expansion at the Green Castle Pike is to retract 22.85 acres of land up against 70, basically the land that you can see just to the right of the 70 symbol there. It's currently, it's farmland, it's not served by service, and it's far away from the road frontage. So, the land that does have road frontage is still proposed to be in the MRGA. It's also farmland with HI zoning and utilities have not been extended to this area, but future service for water and wastewater would be by the city. Planning Commission recommended this retraction on September 27th. Next map is the recommended road improvements. This is consistent with the long-range transportation plan of the metropolitan planning area. Red shows new roads, orange is reconstruction of existing roads. Yellow shows where signalization, traffic control improvements are recommended. And green shows road widening recommendations. Future park needs. This map shows that the blue bubble areas, it's a quarter mile around existing park space, whether that is the blue, which is existing parks, or the purple, which is Board of Education open space. The red and the yellow and the orange, that's the result of the DNR equity analysis, which we used because it was a very intriguing concept. In addition to showing whether or not you're within a quarter mile of a park, what DNR looked at was more demographic kind of things, so you could look at it in conjunction. And so, somewhere in here, I have these notes. They looked at the ratio of children under 16, areas of high concentration of poverty, high population density, and access to existing parks. So, the red areas that you see on here, that in some cases are outside a bubble area, in some cases are in, are shown according to this DNR equity analysis, an area that should be a high priority for parks if we're looking to create new parks. And then, orange being the medium to medium-high need area, and yellow being a low to medium need area. So, in the future, as we look to create new parks, or people offer the city land thinking, you know, I don't need this land, maybe the city could use it for park, this type of map would help us determine whether it would be a good use of taxpayer dollars. This is the water and wastewater priorities area map. The green is the city of Hagerstown that, of course, is our number one priority for city water and city wastewater. Number two is inside the medium-range growth boundary outside the city. That's the yellow area. And then, finally, the final priority would be outside the city's medium-range growth area, inside the county's urban growth area.
So, we just wanted to review the timeline for those of you who aren't as familiar with the Comprehensive Plan Update process. So, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 30th, 2017, and they also met on September 13th, 2017 to review the requested expansion of the MRGA. There was a joint meeting of Planning Commission and Mayor and City Council on September 19th, 2017. And then, the Planning Commission held several meetings to review the offsetting retraction of the MRGA and also to review state comments that we received. Finally, the Planning Commission approval to forward to Mayor and City Council on December 13th. And then, on February 13th, we were here to present the plan update to Mayor and Council. And then, as for the current status of the plan, the official Mayor and Council 90-day review began on February 13th. So, per state law, Mayor and Council action to either adopt the plan, reject the plan, or remand the plan back to Planning Commission for changes. Mayor and Council has the option to approve for itself one 60-day extension, and that's in addition to the 90-day review. And if Mayor and Council take no action within this timeframe, the plan is deemed approved by state law. And if the plan is remanded back to Planning Commission, the Commission must hold another public hearing on revision before sending back to Mayor and Council with the recommended new plan. So, that's where we're at now. And then, I just wanted to enter into the record the Planning Commission file by reference and the certification of advertisement for the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak at this public hearing either. If anybody wishes to speak, please stand up now and give us your name and address.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Jim Castillo, C.A.S.T.I.L.L.O. I live at 4711 North 24th Street in Arlington, Virginia. I'm here as a representative for the Dowb family, D.O.U.B. owns about 120 acres at the axis of 70 and 40. I was hired by them. I've actually been up in front of this board several times. I built the Stonehouse Shopping Center a number of years ago here. And so, I was brought in by Jim Dowb and his partners to get access for that property from S.H.A. That was my initial introduction to what I was doing. We're very far along with that, with S.H.A. I expect we will have an approved study within 60 days, which is key to being able to market the property to appropriate users. There is some history with this property. It was annexed sometime, I'm guessing in 2008 or 2009, from the county. It was annexed in a CR zoning, which was the closest zoning that the city had at that time to highway intersection zoning. It also had a zoning of a P.O.M. The property was at that time bisected by a FEMA flood plane that has since been removed by FEMA because it was mapped incorrectly. And so, now, it's on your master plan, it shows it all as CR, even though I think on the books, it's still CR and P.O.M. The world has changed dramatically since 2008 and 2009, as I'm sure most of you know. I've spent the last 35, 40 years building commercial properties across the country, even in Puerto Rico. And in 2007, 2008, 2009, the world of both business and retail just sort of flipped over and died in many, many cases. The retail industry has retracted tremendously. A lot of it was because of public companies gobbling up each other so that two or three retailers would become one retailer. And so, the population of retailers retracted tremendously. Also, retail became less profitable because of the recession, the retraction of spending. And this property, when it was annexed into the city, was under contract with a fairly large developer out of Annapolis, Petrie Ross. And they were, they had plans for about a million square feet to go on this property. That kind of development does not happen in the U.S. anymore, where there used to be 25, 35, 40 large retail properties. I'm guessing there are only five or six a year now, where there used to be a multiple of that. So, the property came in under a plan to put a large retail site on there and under the P.O.M. designation, some multifamily kinds of uses. As I said, I came late to the game, just in the last year, and I've been tasked with not only getting the S.H.A. access, which is the primary goal that the partnership needs in order to market the property, but also to talk to the city. And I've met with Steve and Kathy a couple of times and with Rodney Tishu on the traffic issues, but to try and talk about what kinds of uses are employment-centered tax incentive kinds of uses that the city would like and appreciate that can replace the million square feet of retail that was there before. So, I have, I've wanted to introduce this. As I said, I came late to the game. I did not know until about a month ago that you guys were, the city, not you guys, sorry to be familiar, the city was doing a new comp plan. And at that point, I talked to the partnership and said, "Look, we need to address this. We need to open up the subject with the city so that we don't get behind the eight ball, so to speak, and have the CR the only zone that is available for this piece of property." Now, the CR is a large zoning classification, has a huge number of uses, but it doesn't necessarily have all the uses that the H1 zoning, or HI zoning, excuse me, HI zoning, had from the county. And what we would like to do, and what I just want to present tonight, is we would like to enter in a very quick conversation with your Planning and Development staff to see if there is a good way, and Kathy, I think, believes that a text amendment for this might be the easiest, quick way to do it, but we would like to be able to expand the CR zoning so that includes some of the uses that were taken off the table when the highway intersection zoning was taken from the county and it became CR with the city. You have a number of vehicles that, zoning vehicles that would allow that. You have the PUD designation. The property already has access to water and sewer, although the sewer would have to be extended a little bit, and some, probably a new pumping station would have to be added, but it has access to water and sewer. It will have an approved T.I.S. from the state, which will handle a huge number of cars that are in the same range as a million-square-foot retail center would be. The other thing is, I think, that in looking at the property, since it abuts on Landis Road some residential, we would like to be able to put a residential buffer on this property to keep the character, the residential character of the residential housing across Landis Road, so that we would create residential buffer that would shield the existing housing from more intense uses. And, you know, the biggest problem usually on a project of this size is traffic. We've been working with S.H.A. for a number of months, and they've given us comment letters that if we answer these 10 or 12 questions that have been raised, that they will issue an approval for the concept plan. So, I'm really up here just to introduce myself and say we would like to work with the city and try and make the development of this site as attractive as possible for both the city and for the Dowb partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Is this the, is this the property that's out near Beaver Creek?
It's, can I just point over here?
Behind the share of it.
Yeah, we're two different, two different. And this is the one on this side.
Yeah, it's this property right here.
On the right side, you're coming up 70. It's on the right side. Like, when you get off? Yeah, I never talked. Yeah.
Does the, put this screen up. Is this realignment affect this property?
No.
Just wanted to make sure.
This property is already in the city.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood it all.
And part of the reason that the development of it is coming late is because the county did not agree without protest.
Understand, understand. And I think some of us were a little confused because back in the day, before the bubble bust, as you may recall, you were one of two
Exactly.
Major malls that were trying to compete.
And I was working for the competing mall.
Right, exactly. One was on the other side of 70.
Exactly.
And that's why we were trying to make sure which one we're dealing with.
So, the one on the east side is the Oliver property, right?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, yes.
The one on the right is...
That's correct.
I remember that property back in 2008, '09, I was county commissioner then, and I had argued fairly heavily that I thought the most appropriate use of that property you were talking about and the most welcoming would be for the new high school location. That was my argument back then. I thought, you know, the stadium and the high school would have made a very complimentary entrance into the city. Of course, I was argued down. I think they ended up picking the IBM site, but that's one on the bridge.
To be blunt here, the property really hasn't been pursued in a development vein for a couple of years. And I was working for Miles and Stockbridge, who some of the partners are lawyers there, and on a completely different project. And then, they brought me in on this. So, it's sort of an open book, and that's why we want to talk to the city and try and bring the best uses, both for the partnership and for the city.
Your testimony, you're under oath. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question for staff.
Yes, go right ahead, Kristen.
I just have one quick question. That is, on the transportation map, on page nine, the bottom, and unless you've got x-ray vision, these maps are a little hard to see in this flyer that we have here. But I'm trying to make out where on this map the Eastern Boulevard is, where it meets, what is that, East Memorial? The reason I ask is, I think I've posed this question before, and I don't, like I said, I can't see it on here, so I don't know for certain. But what I had proposed before was that we indicate a new road going through there along the creek between Eastern Boulevard and what is currently what I call the School Bus Depot. Because right now, all the buses come out on Frederick Street, and they gotta cross the railroad tracks, you know, and what is that Willow Circle or Commonwealth Avenue or whatever. And if you could get a road from where we tore down MELP, from Eastern Boulevard over to there, then half of the buses could come out that road and head north, while the other came out and head south. And it would provide connectivity between Eastern Boulevard, which is a very accessible road, and the business park area back in there, you know, for those business park-oriented uses that have larger truck traffic. So, I don't know if it's up here. All I'm saying is now that MELP's gone, you know, which is really a change over the last couple of years, that we think about that type of road connection that I think would benefit the land back in there. Yeah, I don't know. Just a thought.
Cool. Yeah, that's a thought. Anybody else have any questions for Kathy? No? Okay, great. We leave the record open for 10 days. Thank you.
Thank you. City Minister, your comments, please.
Nothing to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Kristen?
I have a couple of comments to make, and I apologize first that I couldn't be here at the regular meeting, our work session, last Tuesday. I can tell you that there was an issue, you know, near and dear to me, which is the indoor sportsplex. And so, you know, after years of talking about that and having it sort of on the agenda, I hope you appreciate that I simply could not be here, and that's something that I would not have missed if I could have avoided.
It's okay.
The other thing is, I had intended to attend and make a few comments at the Board of Zoning Appeals hearing on Wednesday evening for the proposed sign or tower out at the North High School complex. And, you know, just so folks are aware, and I wanted to say this now because I didn't get an opportunity to attend our meeting last week, or that hearing, you know, that it's not for lack of interest, and it's not for sharing in some of those concerns, especially as it relates to the deliberations that occurred. And I had to sort of read the Herald article a couple of times to understand what was really asked for, which was a variance to a sign and not, and not an exception for a tower. And so, you know, as that sort of sank in, there are two things that came to mind, and one is, you know, the determination that it wasn't a lattice tower, and if anybody Googles, you know, lattice tower, you'll see there's lots of different kinds, but the structures in general all have lattice framing going up. And so, that's just something that I would have noted that I, that I did not agree with. And then when I realized what was being asked for really was a sign variance, and especially to the height, the additional concerns that I had expressed, and again, I expressed these in some emails, you know, that floated back and forth among staff in the body, prior to that, you know, was that significant variance. And the reason, I guess, I found some of that odd was, anybody that drives past North High, you know, you can see in both directions, you know, as far as the eye can see. And for me, you know, needing an additional height for a sign typically means you have some hardship of the ability to see that sign via an obstruction for a line of sight. And so, for me, being able to drive, you know, through that area and see in both directions in front of that campus along the road, I had some confusion over the necessity for a sign, you know, to be of, you know, of one hundred and fifteen feet, when there's clearly signs at the property on that school, and there've been signs posted in front of that school numerous times, that don't need to be more than the ten-foot height in order to achieve line of sight, which is what height sort of speaks to. And then the second point to that, you know, I guess I wasn't sure, you know, how going roughly ninety-five feet higher than what's prescribed by ordinance, even if you got past, you know, it being not, it being a lattice versus a stealth tower and being, you know, permissible, was, you know, the statement that the Board of Zoning Appeals has to prove minimum reasonable, the minimum reasonable necessary, you know. And so, you know, the applicant here was the board of ed, not the tower company, you know. And so, I wasn't sure, you know, why ninety-five feet was the minimum necessary to achieve and overcome a hardship of a line of sight for the property. And then the third item within that, where it says, you know, compliance with the ordinance and the variance wouldn't deprive the applicant of use of this site, commonly enjoyed by similar properties in the same district. And so, it got me thinking, you know, you've got the West Maryland Hospital, you've got a number of schools, you've got other properties of similar land size along that stretch, and so you have to accept that, you know, if you're going to provide this ninety-five-foot variance and have a hundred and fifteen-foot sign in front of this school, that, you know, you can't then deny properties along this stretch or in other stretches. And I think the tower entity has made it very clear that they plan on doing this at other locations around the city, and so, you know, you can't deny it at South High and at Bestor and, you know, any other school campus that you can think about in this city that is of a similar property in a similar district. And the additional note to that is the self-created hardship, you know, that the applicant can't be the entity that created the hardship. And again, I get back to this notion that the sign is now, you know, the maximum's regularly ten, we're going ninety-five feet above that, and one of the conditions placed upon it is that they have to have a minimum of eight-foot trees just to start out. And so, if the maximum height of a sign typically in the district is ten, line of sight is typically the issue associated with the increase of a height of signage, think of your fast food signs along an interstate. Here, we're creating, you know, we're asking the applicant to place something on the site adjacent to the item being installed, in this case, the sign, which will immediately, in any other case, create a hardship, i.e. an eight-foot tree, you know, next to what typically would be a ten-foot sign. And then the last item that I'll note in that is this item. And this is why I sort of wanted us to sort of step back, you know, and have some discussion about how this would be applied around the city to all of these school sites, because it's going to happen. And it's not just going to happen there. As people need more cell services, these devices become more technologically prevalent, we're going to need these things everywhere, is this statement that, you know, the decision will not be injurious to the neighborhood. And I think that we have to take that thought process to heart when we talk about things like this, when we have things like this approved, where there is significant community impact, significant neighborhood impact, and significant concern, you know, over what that means, especially when there's going to be a proliferation of these things across the city over time. And so, those were the comments that I was certainly have liked to share last week, and I apologize I didn't get the opportunity to do so.
Go ahead. Emily?
I have a couple of comments this evening, too personal, but one I'll start out. I just want to talk about this concept that the people up here are doing this for money, or that we're padding our pockets, or that we're doing this for any other reason other than we don't love the city of Hagerstown. So, I just want to put something in perspective for everyone, since there's been some misconceptions that we're making lots of money. We make eight thousand dollars a year to do this. We didn't run because we wanted to make money. We ran because we love the city of Hagerstown. Just to put it in perspective, me alone, over the last seven days since the last time I sat in front of you guys on camera, I have attended a meeting with the Mediation Center with a collaboration with the police for a project they're working on, the United Way Ribbon Cutting, a CRS Board meeting, a Gen Next event. I spoke at M.K. Dow to one of their girls groups. I had a meeting with a heroin advocacy group. I attended the North versus South baseball game, the YMCA Gala, the Bull and Oyster Roast, had a meeting with One Room Media with how to better communicate with our citizens and get our positive message out there. I attended the Service Awards today and had a meeting with the Maryland Heroin Awareness Advocates before this meeting tonight. So, not taking into account the meetings that we do here that you watch on camera, the preparation we do, the packet reading we do, the phone calls we make, if you average out, if I spent about two hours doing those things per meeting, I made two dollars and seventy cents an hour last week. So, I don't do this for the money at all. I do this because I love Hagerstown and I want to see improvement. I just wanted to put that out there, because there seems to be this, like, we're up here writing all these contracts for our own business and making money, none of us are doing this for money. I live on Summit Avenue, I don't live in some rich neighborhood, and I wasn't born with a silver spoon in my mouth, I drive a car that's eleven years old, like, give me a break. And the second thing I want to discuss is some comments that were made today on one of these, what's going on in Hagerstown websites that are about as useful as the Inquirer, but it seems like every time someone is frustrated with us or a decision that we make, it gets brought up, how I'm not fit to be in office because my friends are drug addicts. So, I'm getting emotional because it pisses me off, but to be honest, my best friend died of heroin overdose. I discussed it on a video that got viewed sixty thousand times. I've discussed it on W.J.A.L., I've discussed it on W.D.V.M., on a minor detail in a Herald Mail. My best friend was a quote-unquote junkie, and I watched her lose her entire life and everything she's worked for because of heroin. So, if you think that that insults me, that people hiding behind a computer and making comments about how she deserved to die, it doesn't. That speaks more onto your character than it speaks of mine. And if someone has an issue that my best friends are drug addicts and how that makes me not fit for office, I'm proud of her because she was more than that addiction. And I watched her take everything, that drug take everything from her, and I pray that those people that make those comments never feel what I feel every single day. And the last thing, sorry, I'm emotional tonight. This speaks volumes as to where we are as a world, because I'm going to sit up here and defend my ten-year-old daughter, who a woman who's old enough to be my mother decided it was appropriate today to talk about her and my parenting. You don't like the tiered tax structure? Okay. If you disagree with me politically, that's fine. I signed up for this. If you want to hide behind a computer and attack me personally, talk about who I'm dating, what I'm doing, my best friend being a quote-unquote junkie, that's fine, but leave my daughter out of it. And I want to make that very, very clear tonight. My daughter and my parenting are off limits, period. I don't want to hear about it again. I signed up to be attacked personally. That ten-year-old little girl who's beautiful and compassionate and is going to be a future leader one day does not deserve to be talked about on any website under any circumstance whatsoever. And I'm sorry that I'm being negative, but I've had enough. It is one thing to talk about us, you do not get to talk about my child or anyone else's child. So, I hope I've made that abundantly clear to the sixty-some-year-old woman who has children old enough, older than me, who hid behind a computer today and made those comments. It's unacceptable, and I will not tolerate it. I'm done.
Lou?
I only say that I find that social media in today's world is more of a negative than a positive. I've kept office for quite a while now, especially when it comes to both local politics and national politics, and until we as a nation realize, not only on the local level, but as we see our whole nation being manipulated by foreign governments through social media, and we seem to really enjoy it. So, my answer is I've essentially stayed away from it. You may have noticed you haven't seen a lot of posts from me lately, and that's the reason. And I would note one other thing for those who do get on it a lot. In the years I've been on it, I don't believe there's one human being I've ever met that's changed their political position because of what somebody posted on Facebook. Not one single human being in the world. It seems to, it seems to be a media that is solely there to cause disruption. That's my only comments.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Emily, I am sorry that that happened to you. I've only been doing this for two months and have not had that experience. I'm sure it's coming one day, but I'm really sorry that, and it breaks my heart for you. So, that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Well, let it be known that I use social media because I love to stir people up, so. All right, I really don't have anything else. We're going to move on. We've been here way too long, as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of minutes presented for the Mayor and City Council Meeting held on January nine, sixteen, twenty-three, and thirty of twenty-eighteen.
Second.
Emily, second, all in favor? Discom, sorry, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved, presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to nothing. Introduction of an ordinance authorizing the sale of property located at twenty-three West Franklin Street.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the Mayor and City Council to introduce an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at twenty-three West Franklin Street to M. Scott Bowen for the sum of one dollar. The sale will provide the opportunity for approximately five hundred thousand dollars of private investment to create professional office space for MSB architects. The sale will be in accordance with all terms and conditions outlined in the attached purchase agreement. Second.
Second by Emily. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to nothing. Introduction of an ordinance, Land Management Code amendments, adoption of local conversion district overlay to the zoning map of the city of Hagerstown.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move Mayor and City Council introduce an ordinance to amend Chapter one forty Land Management Code of the City Code. This amendment shall amend the zoning map for the purpose of applying a local conversion district overlay to the property located in the northwest corner of the intersection of Potomac Avenue and Magnolia Avenue pursuant to rezoning case ZM two thousand seventeen zero-two, Eklund Family LLC, and in accordance with the attached ordinance and the attached findings of fact to be completed prior to the adoption of this ordinance and direct that the map to be amended to reflect this change.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be abstaining. I believe I have a potential conflict of interest.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries three to nothing, one of stanchion. Approval of resolution authorizing designation of alley four dash seventy-five as Varner Way.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move to authorize the designation of alley number four dash seven five as Varner Way. This alley intersects Brookline Avenue between Jefferson Street and Interval Road. The purpose of this designation is to eliminate postal service and emergency service dispatch confusion over the address assignment for the dwelling at the rear of number seven-one-three Interval Road.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to nothing. Consolidation of Upper Floors Redevelopment Fund and Economic Redevelopment Fund.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for Mayor and City Council to authorize the consolidation of the city's upper floor fund into the city's economic redevelopment fund and to authorize the dissolving of the upper floors fund. This would include moving all cash and loan balances from the upper floors fund to the Economic Redevelopment Fund. This funding will continue to be utilized for existing economic development incentive programs within the Economic Redevelopment Fund. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to nothing. Amendment of a fiscal year eighteen CDBG annual action plan, funding transfer between CDBG activities.
Mayor, hereby move for the Mayor and City Council to amend the fiscal year eighteen Community Development Block grant annual action plan in order to transfer funds between two CDBG activities. Forty-five thousand dollars of CDBG funding will be reallocated from fiscal year eighteen Sidewalk Construction Project to fiscal year eighteen Prospect Avenue Crosswalk Project. Details of the amendment are attached.
Second.
Who was it?
Cheryl.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to nothing. And last but not least, approval of a citywide mowing contract, two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the Mayor and City Council to authorize and approve Surf Tech Custodial, Inc., East Coast Landscaping, and Brightview Landscape as the city of Hagerstown's mowing contractors for the respective departments as listed below. These services were offered through bid proposal B-one-six-four-seven-point-one-eight in January two thousand eighteen. Contract term is from March fifteen, two thousand eighteen, through December fifteen, two thousand eighteen, with possibility of up to two additional one-year extensions subject to mutual consent, city of Hagerstown and the respective individual vendors. Surf Tech Custodial, East Coast Landscaping, and Brightview Landscapes. Total contract amount is one hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, as described in the table attached to the ordinance.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to nothing. Were adjourned.